I've had 53 pediatric deaths in Kansas. Now that is compared to 110 for the whole season of last year. And then deaths altogether, we have 65 and 100 last year. So it is, we have not hit our peak yet. And oftentimes by this time of the year, we would have hit our peak where the cases being reported by emergency rooms and outpatient clinics would have declined, but not yet. It could still go up for a couple of weeks before it comes down. I hear coworkers talking about their programs having a lot of ill staff. So you'll also hear that we are having an epidemic. And that's kind of a scary word. The reality is that we have an epidemic every year when it comes to flu season because the baseline that the Center for Disease Control sets is during a non-flu week. And so we're always going to surpass that every year. So when you hear epidemic, it is what we have every year. It's still time to get your flu shot even though the vaccine may not be the best match. And it does have the H3N2 in it, which is the predominant strain this year. Even if it isn't the best match, and CDC should release that sometime at the end of the month, it's still important to get your flu shot because it will provide, may provide some coverage if you do get the flu where it may not be down as long, it may not be as severe. It also is important to contact a medical provider in the first 48 hours if you think you have the flu because there are antivirals like Tamiflu that if given will really reduce the severity and the duration. There are some pharmacies and stores in Sedgwick County that are reporting low stock. So it is important that you call before you go. There's no shortage of Tamiflu, so they can also order more. At Sedgwick County Health Department on 27/16, West Central, we do have flu shots available. And at this time of the year, we're providing free flu shots to uninsured adults and children with Medicaid and other state insurance. And then for children that are uninsured, we have a sliding scale from $2 to 20. And that's in a walk-in basis. And so that is available. And there's also flu shots available in the community as well. The best prevention is to wash those hands. And if you have to sneeze or cough, do so into a tissue or your elbow and just continue to wash the hands and not a quick wash, a nice long wash, whether it's singing "Happy Birthday" twice to yourself or going through the alphabet. But make sure you wash your hands and be careful about all the surfaces you touch because those germs are everywhere. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Adrienne. I think it's important that everyone heard what you had to say today about our flu shots. They are available. We don't have a shortage over at the Health Department. We do urge everyone to go and get their flu shot. Any other commissioners have anything? Any questions? Okay. Well, thank you, Adrienne.
You're welcome.
And with that, Chairman, I'll let you begin the meeting.
Thank you very much, Kate. Well, at this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order for February 7th, 2018. Today, I would like to welcome all of the people that are joining us here in the audience, also those that are joining us on television and through the Internet. We have, as Kate mentioned, a number of appointments today, financial reports and bids and contracts reports. We do have an executive session that'll be scheduled at the end of the meeting today. Well, I have called the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, first item.
Invitation to be led by Sister Joan Berger, Sister of St. Joseph. Please remain standing for your flag salute.
Let us bow our heads. Good and gracious God, as the Sedgwick County Commission gathers today in order to deal with the issues that have come or will come before them, we ask your blessing. Though not all the commissioners will look at the issues in the same way, we ask you to help them listen with openness to one another. As individuals, it may not be clear as to what is the best direction to take in decisions they face, but working together, they can arrive at a consensus on the issues placed before them. It is this range of perspectives that will help them excel in their decisions as long as they respect one another's diverse opinions. Help them to agree on what is true and good so that they may know how to proceed in all that comes before them today. As members of the county commission, they have been called to be stewards of the resources at their disposal. Help each one of them to be good and honorable stewards of the trust placed in them by the people of Sedgwick County. We ask all this in your name, O God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sister, thank you very much for being here today. We sincerely appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Ransah.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Unruh.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present.
Next item.
Public agenda.
Thank you. We have a couple of people that signed up to speak today. We ask that they provide their name for the record, and you will have three minutes. First individual is Robin Olmer.
Good morning. I'm Robin Olmer, 67207. I was at a city council meeting yesterday, and some of the speakers expressed concerns about the investigation into the Andrew Finch shooting. And after that, then we went to the Wichita Police Department Detective's Office, and he talked to us a little bit about the investigation. He couldn't say much, but he did mention that some of the officers that were closer to Andrew Finch's porch were actually Sedgwick County Sheriff's deputies, and he didn't know whether or not they wore cameras, body cameras. So I wanted to see if I could find out anything else from Sedgwick County about what those officers might have seen. We're not getting a whole lot of transparency about this shooting, so just trying to find more ways of finding out what was going on and why Andrew Finch was shot and what perspective the county might have from their deputies and their body cameras. I thought maybe since Chief Ramsey is not coming up with any body camera footage, that maybe Sheriff Easter might be able to help with that. Last summer, the sheriff's office wanted to buy 100 more cameras. I don't know if that was funded. It was something they had requested last summer. So hopefully those were funded and these sheriff's deputies were wearing body cameras. District Attorney Bennett and Sheriff Easter both said in an article last summer that they appreciated the transparency and accountability that body cameras bring. So I'm asking you, would you please insist on releasing the footage from the officers at the Andrew Finch shooting and give us some transparency and some accountability? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Olmer. Appreciate the comments. Next item is Monica Marks.
Hi, my name's Monica Marks. I'm here, I was also at city council yesterday. I would like to thank the county for being way more democratic with speakers, easier to walk in and sign up and speak. I realize you guys don't have any authority over the DA and how long he's taking with this investigation, but there are local journalists, activists that have released the name of Officer Justin Rapp as the shooter, have said that he is back to work in an administrative capacity. I believe that's been confirmed. He has been seen working a side job at the South Walmart, wearing his uniform and carrying a gun. And so where are we at with the investigation then? What is the outcome of the investigation? When is it going to be done? If you guys don't have any authority over this, maybe you should. I mean, maybe the public should know more about what's going on and when it's going to be completed. I agree that maybe we should see more body camera footage from the county. It feels like this is being put off so that maybe we'll forget about it before the NCAA tournament gets here. But I can assure you, the public wants to know what's going on with this investigation. As far as I know, no police officer has ever been held accountable for a shooting like this. I also know of another shooting back from 2012 that is still not resolved, Troy Lanig Is that still open? What is going on with that? I feel like we can do better than this. We need to wrap this up. Andrew Finch died of a bullet wound to the head that was shot from across the street, so it shouldn't be that complicated. It shouldn't, we shouldn't have to wait five years to figure out what's going on with this investigation. And we should be pressuring the DA to conclude this investigation for the Finch family and for the whole public. And we should definitely find out why this cop is back to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marks. That's the only two that were signed up. Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak on today's public agenda? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of January 3rd, 2018.
Motion by Commissioner Dennis to approve the minutes for January 3rd, 10th, 17th, seconded by Commissioner Unruh. Discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item.
Item D, resolution appointing Virgil Miller to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor, we actually have a number of appointments today. Item D is a resolution appointing Virgil Miller to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging to fill the unexpired term of Jamie Brown, who resigned. Commissioner Michael O'Donnell is recommending that Mr. Miller be appointed and that he serve a term that will end April 11, 2021. He was expected to be present, and you may want to inquire, but I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Yost. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Mr. Virgil Miller to the Sedgwick County Council on Aging to fill the unexpired term of Jamie Brown.
Thank you. Second to motion, discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
And Mr. Miller is here today.
Mr. Miller, if you'd please approach the podium. We'd be happy to swear you in. You may make some comments after that.
I do solemnly swear that I'll support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging, so help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you. I actually had not prepared much of a speech today. When my wife's father was passing away at the age of 91, he would say, "Getting old isn't for sissies." And I heartily agree with him. I can afford these compression gloves that make my arthritis in my hands, keep my hands usable. I wonder how many old people in the county cannot. There in, in the field of sports psychology, they recognize a phenomenon called the Matthew Effect. It is a reference to a passage in the book of Matthew that in essence says, "Those who have will get more and those who have little will get less." And while I understand the applicability to sports psychology, I wonder if that phenomenon has a place among the aging population. And that is a thing that I would like to start exploring.
Very good. Thank you very much for being here today. Congratulations. I'm sorry. Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller. I appreciate your willingness to serve and your dedication to this segment of the population, both the disabled and the aging. And it's great to have another person from District 2 on the board, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item E, resolution reappointing Kenya Cox to the Sedgwick County Community Corrections Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman, item E is a resolution reappointing Kenya Cox to the at-large position on the Community Corrections Advisory Board. She has been serving on that board, and her new term would expire February 8th of 2020. She's expected to be present, and I would urge adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. What's with the board?
Will we adopt the resolution?
Second.
We have a motion and three seconds, looks like. Discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
And welcome. Congratulations to Kenya Cox, and thank you for continuing to serve. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item F, resolution reappointing Roger Lyons to the Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee.
Mr. Chairman, the next three items offered to the Solid Waste Management Committee. Item F is a resolution reappointing Mr. Roger Lyons to that board in position number nine. He's been serving, and his new term would expire December 31st of 2019. I'm not aware that he is in attendance today. Item G is a resolution appointing Jennifer Jance McCauley to position number 15 at the recommendation of Commissioner Jim Howell. Her term would expire December 31st of 2018, and I'm told that she is expected to attend today. And item H is a resolution appointing Ryan Gatewood to position, position number eight on that board, excuse me, to fill out the unexpired term of Mr. Rob Wall. So this term would expire December 31st of 2019, and I'm told that he is present. So I would urge adoption of resolutions F, G, and H, and if we, and possibly swearing in to, to the individuals who may be here.
Thank you, Mr. Yost. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion that we would adopt the resolution appointing Roger Lyons and Jennifer Jance McCauley and Ryan Gatewood. These three, these three agenda items, I make a motion we do that this morning.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
If the individuals would please approach the podium. We'll be swearing you in.
Good morning. I do solemnly swear that I'll support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee, position number 15 and number eight, so help me God. I do.
I do.
Congratulations, please.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. I really am looking forward to working with this board.
Thank you, and welcome. Roger, do you want to say anything?
Thank you. Just like to say thank you for, I look forward to working with this committee in Wichita here in the Sedgwick County and filling Rob's vacated position and getting involved with the community and everything now that I'm here in town. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We welcome both of you to our boards, and thank you very much for serving our community. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item I, resolution appointing commissioners to various boards and committees.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor, item I is actually four resolutions that appoint commissioner, county commissioners to various boards. This one pertains to the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, and Commissioners Ransah and Howell are being recommended for that. The second resolution is, is the Wichita Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, where Commissioners Dennis and Ransah and Howell and County Clerk Kelly Arnold are being appointed to that. The third resolution is the Wichita Downtown Development Corporation. Commissioner Unruh is being recommended for that. And the fourth one is Sedgwick County Technical Education and Training Authority. Commissioner Michael O'Donnell is being recommended for that position. I would urge adoption of each of these items.
Thank you, Mr. Yost. Commissioner Ransah?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolutions for the CJCC, WAMPO, and WDDC. I'd like to take the other appointments separately. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion to do the first three. I'll second the motion. Discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah?
Yeah, I, I think we all know there's an ongoing FBI investigation that hangs over this commission like a dark cloud, I think, until that's resolved and for a variety of other reasons, that it would be in the best interest for this commission not to appoint Commissioner O'Donnell to this board or any other board for that matter. So I would, I'm not going to support this motion. I would encourage my colleagues to reconsider this appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion appoint Commissioner O'Donnell to the Sedgwick County Technical Advisory Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah.
No.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item. Oh, yes, Madam Clerk.
New Business. Item K, presentation of the quarterly.
No, J.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Chairman. Item J, accept the resignation of Randall Wells from the Eagle Township Board trustee appointment, position.
Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution accepting the resignation of Randall Wells from the Eagle Township Board trustee position. No replacement has yet been selected. Recommendation will eventually be made on that by Commissioner Dennis in whose district Eagle Township lies, and I would urge the BOCC here this morning to accept this resignation.
Thank you, Mr. Yost. I want to thank Randall Wells for his service on the Eagle Township Board of Trustees. I believe next board meeting, we will have a replacement to be named, but at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we do accept the resignation of Randall Wells from the Eagle Township Board of Trustees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none on, oh, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item, please.
New Business. Item K, presentation of the quarterly financial report.
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager. This is the fun part of the job. So before Rick's presentation, I wanted to take the opportunity to recognize Lindsay Povrso, as you know, our chief financial officer, for making the Wichita Business Journal's 2018 CFO Award list. Where is she? So when they contacted me and asked if there was anybody we wanted to submit, obviously our CFO is well deserved, and I jumped at the opportunity to recognize her for, for different reasons. Biggest is Lindsay embodies, as you all know, the Sedgwick County values every day. A few of those, just to name a few. She's a good steward of the county resources, obviously. She's accountable, and she is certainly dedicated. Within her first year as CFO, she has incorporated a number of changes within the Department of Finance, which has led to enhanced morale within the workplace, greater security safeguards for the county finances, and more consistent operational policies, which certainly help safeguard the county's employees and finances. She is a great team player, leader, and coach within the organization. I am so proud of her and happy to work with her on it every day, but I was more than happy to rec, advance her name to the business journal to recognize her for achievements. So along with Lindsay's recognition, I'd like to share that the Sedgwick County recently confirmed that our organization has maintained the highest credit ratings from Standard and Poor's, S&amp;P, Moody's, and Fitch. These ratings are updated on an annual basis from each entity, with S&amp;P being AAA, Moody's AAA, and Fitch being AA+. The report summarizes reasons for the high ratings, such as robust financial position with a strong economy and tax base, strong budget management during times of economic recovery, and the use of conservative budgets, which utilize available revenue raising tools and expenditure-cutting mechanisms as needed. We are capable, we are able to capitalize on these high ratings to secure prime interest rates when debt is issued, which saves local taxpayer dollars in the long term. All of this has a large part to do with Lindsay and her leadership abilities and her team. It's really about the team. Lindsay just happens to be the coach of that team, but she has made, and the team has made a lot of improvements over the last year, which I'm extremely proud of. But in this case, it was Lindsay who was recognized, and we are thankful to have her. And with that, I would like to let Rick lead us in the briefing. He is not going to delegate that.
Thank you. Well, Rick, before you start, on behalf of Sedgwick County Commission, I want to congratulate Lindsay for the award and also thank them for our extremely high bond ratings and so forth. But just as the manager said, Lindsay is the one that is getting the recognition today, but it's because of the folks that work for Lindsay that puts us in this position, and we want to make sure that we thank each and every one of them for what they've done today. With that, Rick, I don't see anyone else wanting to speak. We have, you have our attention.
I had a moment of excitement. I thought the manager was going to give the quarterly financial report, but.
It would go fast.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am Rick Durham, your Deputy Chief Financial Officer, and as always, at the end of each quarter, the Division of Finance reports on the county's financial condition. The following quarterly financial report that I'm going to give you provides an analysis of the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2017. Just to let you know, here in about 30 or 45 days, you're going to get a lot of this briefed again when I brief you the CAFR at the end of our audit. So I'll run through this fairly quickly because you're going to see these numbers again. So with that, the information contained in this report is pre-audit numbers, so they're unaudited financial statements and exclude any adjustments that may be necessary. So the first section of the report that you have received outlines the information on a budgetary basis for applicable fund types, and it includes comparisons of financial activities with previous fiscal year and adopted and revised budgets. The second part of the report is going to outline capital projects, and the final section consists of fund statements will provide a broad overview of the county's finances in a manner similar to private sector business based on GAAP standards. Again, now, this report has been delivered to you, and it will be posted on the county's website after I provide this report. Again, to reiterate all the comments that were made, I'm just the guy that gets to stand up here and give the report. All the hard work is done by the Budget Department and the Accounting Departments as they put this document together for you all. So I know that those, that team, those teams are represented here today. So when we report on financial status, the county typically aggregates the information into one of several possible groups represented here. The general fund, property tax-supported funds, other operating funds, or all or total operating funds is represented here. So as we look at this chart, at this, we begin the briefing really with how we end the year. So what this chart represents is how we ended the year based on fund balance. So if we start with the general fund, and that's the county's primary operating fund, and it accounts for county services that don't have a designated fund of their own. The general fund includes most general government law enforcement functions, and it receives the broadest variety of revenues. Currently, the operations of 42 divisions are funded from the general fund. And as we go down that first column with the title Gen Fund, you see that revenues are greater than expenditures, which give us a net income for the year of 29.1 million. There were net transfers out of the. There were net transfers out of the General Fund of 23 million. So the net change in fund balance in the General Fund is $5.8 million. That next line is the actual beginning fund balance at the beginning of 2017, which was 62 and a half million. So we end 2017 with an ending fund balance of $68.3 million. And as we move right, the next column is the Debt Service Fund. Expenditures were more than revenues in that. And then, so it shows that net income of 3.6, that negative $3.6 million. There were net transfers of 3.1 million into that. So that gives us a net change in fund balance in the Debt Service Fund of that $437,000. And again, the ending fund balance is $2.8 million. So move to the next column, Other Tax Supported Funds. The county has 31 budgeted Other Operating Funds that are not supported. Well, hold on, I'm jumping ahead here. So that's the Other Tax Supported Funds. So if we look at that, you see that expenditures were slightly higher than revenues, so that net income is eight, that negative 895,000. There are transfers out of that. So the net change in that fund balance is 4.4 million. So that actual beginning fund balance was $8 million, and we drew that down to 3.6 So if we move on to the next column, that the Non-Property Tax Supported Funds. The county has 31 budgeted Other Operating Funds, which are not supported directly with with property taxes. So if we look at that column, you see expenditures were about $1 million higher than revenues. The net transfers of $456,000 into those property tax, those non-property tax funds. So the net change in fund balance is a negative 572,000. So the ending fund balance then is 30.4 million. Continuing to move to the right, we go to the Fire District. The Fire District, as you know, is a distinct government entity that's operated as a part of the county government, and it levies property taxes, but it is reported separately. So as we look at the Fire District, revenues were more than expenditures by 1.5 million. There were no transfers in or out of the Fire District. So that gives us a net change in fund balance in the Fire District of 1.5 million. So that fund balance ends at 5.5 million. Our next column is our Enterprise and Internal Service Funds. And as we look at those, revenues and expenditures are essentially the same. There are small net transfers, so the net change in fund balance in those funds is 214,000. So the ending fund balance in 2017 of those is 32.8 million. So as we go to the very far right, and we wrap those up, this references to operating funds, and that means the Property Tax Supported Funds plus all other operating funds listed here. That's why we reference Total Operating Funds. So the Total Operating Funds for the county at the end of 2017 had revenues of 366 million, expenditures of 341 million. So the net income there was 25 million. So the net transfers then to other funds, to transfers out were 23 million. So the net change in fund balance was that positive 2.1 million, which gives us an ending fund balance of 143.6 million, nearly 143.7. So I'll get into some of the details. This focuses on the county Property Tax Supported Funds. In fiscal year 2017, net revenues were 242.9 million. This is an increase over 2016 of 8.7 million. Main increases that we realized were in property taxes of 1.83 million. And as you'll see later, licenses and permits of 7.2 million, which is as a result of the county becoming the managing partner of MABCD. So that's a lot, the bulk of that increase is that in, that revenue. Staying with County Property Tax Supported Funds, these are the net expenditures through the fourth quarter. And you can see those net expenditures are at 241.9 million, an increase in expenditures over 2016 of 7 million. Now, $5 million of that can be directly attributed to personnel costs, just an increase in personnel costs. So the bulk of that was personnel costs, and I'll get into that later also as I go into the details of this. This chart shows the quarter change year over year. So we had a 3% increase in revenue from 2016 to 2017, and a 3.7% increase in expenditures from 16 to 17. And this shows the fourth quarter net income on a budgetary basis. So we see that we have net income of a million dollars from 16 to 17. So I'll go in and get into a little more detail here, or a lot more detail, as we go in. Staying with the County Property Tax Supported Funds, these are the top 10 revenues. So obviously, ad valorem taxes are the greatest source of revenue that we have, and that increased by 2.4%. Sales and use taxes are down 2.2%. Motor vehicle taxes up a percent and a half. And there's that line, that 975% for that miscellaneous non-business licenses and permits. That's the MABCD revenue. And the reason that percentage is obviously so high is that there was, we didn't do that in 2016, so that's that new revenue. As we move down, I'd like to draw your attention to the last line, the next of the last line on here, not all revenues, but the officer fee line. So there's a 27% increase in officer fees. Now, these are tied directly to the mortgage registration fees, which as you note is not on this chart. That would be the number 11 revenue. And I'd bring that to your attention because while there's a $680,000 increase in officer fees or 27%, there is in mortgage registration, mortgage registration fees decreased, 1.3 million or 30% reduction from 16 to 17. And as you know, that these revenues are going to be phased out in 2019. So as you draw down, you can see all revenues for the county ended at 242.9 million or a 3.7% increase, tying back to the chart you saw earlier. This chart shows key personnel expenditures for the county Property Tax Supported Funds. And again, personnel are the largest single category of expense that the county incurs. So salaries and wages had an increase of 4.6%. Our insurance premiums are up 4.4%. The pension contributions down slightly of 3.2% due to actions of capers. Obviously, the FICA would be up similar because it's tied to salaries. Overtime costs, down 6.6%. So as you see, all personnel expenditures are up $5 million or 4% increase. Here are key non-personnel expenditures in the county Property Tax Supported Funds. So the grant award increase that you see there at the top line is due to a contractual change in aging and home care. And there's also a 5.5% increase in fleet management charges shown there. That's due to a first-quarter purchase of some sheriff vehicles, so that has been there throughout the year. You've seen that over and over. So all non-personnel costs are up 1.8%. So a very small increase in non-personnel expenditures. So now we move out of the Tax Supported Funds into Non-Tax Special Revenue Funds. So as I stated at the beginning, the county has 31 operating funds, which are not supported directly with property taxes. So for fiscal year 2017, the end of 2017, you can see those revenues are at 67.4 million. That's a fairly significant decrease. So we stay with the Non-Tax Special Revenue Funds. We look at the net expenditures. So we see that those expenditures are down slightly. I'd like to go back for a second and look at these revenues as we go down real quick. That's a fairly significant decrease you can see there. And what I'd like to say is the bulk of that lost revenue is due to the Affordable Airfares program no longer being funded. So that, that represents about $5 million of that. Thought maybe I should clarify that, and maybe I could alleviate a question at the This is a percentage changes in those. Year over year, from 2016, there's a 7.4% decrease in revenue and a 2.6% reduction in expenditures from 2016. So again, we go into the, the top 10 revenues, if you will, for the Non-Tax Special Revenue Funds. And you can see, there's a lot of red on this chart, obviously. The Affordable Airfares number is not listed on here, but if you notice, a lot of that red are due to state programs or federal programs being reduced. I'd like to draw your attention to the third line there, that State Revenue, Kdad, has a very large percentage increase of 216%. That dollar amount, that 3.2%, if, but right above that, if you'll notice, that State Revenue, DCF, that decrease of 2.2, those numbers are actually related. That reduction in DCF is now being reported in Kdad. So that large percentage is obviously, because there wasn't much in that, and that large increase shows that. So that, those offset one another. So it's a way that this, that we're receiving those funds. So as you can see, the top 10 revenues, or all revenues, for Non-Tax Special Revenue Funds show a decrease of 7.4%. Key expenditures in the Non-Tax Special Revenue Funds, as you can see, salaries and wages are still our largest expenditure. You know, we have insurance premiums, obvious, increase of 6.9%. And then there are other fairly large percentage changes, but the dollar amounts are relatively small. So all expenditures in the Non-Tax Special Revenue Funds showed a decrease of 2.6%. So now we move away from the budgetary statements that I talked about, that are showing you the finances on a budgetary basis. And we move into showing you the finances on a GAAP basis. And this is, this information is found behind the fund, the tab in your quarterly report called Fund Statements. And what this chart shows you is the total fund balance at the end of 2017 of the General Fund, the General Fund only, on a GAAP basis. And what this shows, and you can clearly see, there's a pattern here as we go through the tax collection cycle through the first and second quarters, our revenues are up, and then we spend that down through the fiscal year to end our, so 2017, ending fund balance is 67 million. And that's a, and that is annotated in red numbers, and you can see the quarterly comparisons in the red numbers as we go back over the six fiscal years. This chart essentially is the same data, but it's shown, and it's showing something different. While the previous slide showed the fund balance, the dollar amount number, this shows the unrestricted General Fund balance as a percentage of budgeted expenditures. So let me remind you, the county has a fund balance policy that states unrestricted General Fund balance will be at least 20% of budgeted expenditures. So again, you can see the clear pattern as we go back through the fiscal years. And the ending unrestricted balance at the end of 2017 is 33%, which is well above our So move now, and we'll look at the investment portfolio. The, the investment portfolio itself is represented by the brown bars on this chart, which shows the amount of our dollars available for investment. And you can see in December, each December going back to 2012, there's a spike there. Again, that ties to the tax collection cycle. So that's the value of the investments that we have as of December of 17. The blue line there is the yield that we're currently drawing, which is 1.01% compared to our benchmark, which is the one-year Treasury bill, which is at 1.75%. So we're lagging behind that, and that's as a result of what the Fed has done because we're, we have our investments tied up in longer term. And I know each of you has received a quarterly investment report in the email. I think you received it yesterday, perhaps. And if you, as you go through this report, if you'll pay attention to page five of this report, there's a chart on there, and it's a table that depicts the maturity dates of the portfolio, and it kind of explains why we're lagging the way we are. So as the Fed increases rates, which is good for our investments as we invest going forward, 28 of our 55 investments are held in instruments with maturity dates that are two to four years out because of the way we lock those in. So of the 55 instruments, we have 37 of those that, there's a top part of this chart, and I would highlight this to you if you want me to. Nine of those are less than one-year maturity dates. 20 of those are more than one, but less than two-year maturity dates. And then eight of those are more than two years, but less than four years out for maturity date. So as you see, as we start to roll those over into new investments, that gap should change or should narrow. So, but that information is detailed very expertly in this quarterly investment report that's prepared by Brandy Bailey. So she does a good job. This next slide just lists a couple of significant capital projects. If you want more details of the entire capital improvement projects, that also is behind a tab in your book entitled Capital Projects. So it gives you all the details of all active and open capital projects. As we go down this list, Update, Master Control, and Adult Detention, that project was completed in October of 17. The Murdoch Tag Office remodel, construction bids are going to come in early this month. The Aviation Pathway from Derby to Wichita, construction will begin this summer and will be completed before the end of 2018. The bike pedestrian bridge repairs over the Wichita Valley Flood Control. This is repairs on the traffic bridge, and those were completed in the fall of 17. And then the last one, the Wichita Valley Center Flood Control System, major maintenance repairs. And that's the City of Wichita uses funds to reconstruct levee tow drains to protect the levee from washout. If you don't know what that means, I just read what the, what I get from public works. So I'll show you a quick slide. This information shows the leading economic indicators from the Center for Economic Development and Business Research from Wichita State University. So, and the statement that they have on their website says, "The Leading Index continues to indicate an improvement in economic activity into the new year. After slowing declines due to late summer, this can be attributed to a significant improvement in the Kansas Leading Index. There were also improvements in the Aircraft Production Index and the National Industrial Production Index. This would put the level of economic activity slightly above the 2017 levels through the beginning of 2018." Now, they don't have those numbers out there yet, so there's a projection because this is only through December of 17. But they actually show there's a predicted change in the level of economic activity of the next six months from this current level that shows an increase of nearly 1%. So the outlook for the leading indicators is actually positive for the coming year. So as I wrap up the report here, some of the things that we see as threats to the fiscal health of the county is obviously the continuing resolutions that the federal government continues to do, and then changing priorities that we have from them. The state government, the budget there, how is school funding going to be addressed? What effect is that going to have on the, on the county's finances? And unfunded mandates as they still, as they come down from the state. And then a challenge in the local economy is, in the past, I've always talked about the slowing, the slow growth of the local economy, but I think the challenge that we have now is, is growing and developing that skilled labor pool as we move forward, and that's another challenge for this community. So the key points I want you to take away is that the county is currently in sound financial condition, as we showed surpluses in 2017 General Fund. Non-Tax Supported Fund revenues are down 7.4% from, year over year from 2016, as we see decreasing revenues from both federal and state sources. The county's focus has continued emphasis on core services, reduced funding to government services that can be provided by the public sector. So the last thing is that our performance in 2017 was consistent with what we projected. Our fundamentals continue to reflect strong financial position, and our county focus is still to use a strategic plan as a roadmap for success. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Rick, thank you for the detailed analysis. I appreciate that. And I've also read through your quarterly report and so forth. And we saw the email that we got yesterday that details that. Do I have any questions at all from any of the Commissioners on any of the report that we just saw? Oh, Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rick, thanks for the report. It's-
It's as usual understandable even, even at my level. So I just wanted to ask a question, though, that the unrestricted balances as a percent of budget expenditures, we have a benchmark or a policy for us of 20 percent.
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that pretty much consistent with what might be called peer counties? Is it, we have a higher standard or lower? I mean, how do we compare on that particular?
I think the 20 percent actually, if we look at peers, if you will, or best practices that comes from GFOA or Government Finance Officers Association. But what, I will reach out to some of the other counties and find out what their fund balance policy states on that and report that back to you all. But I don't have specific details on that or how that compares.
Okay, well, thank you. I mean, it's very, leaves us in a very comfortable, secure position with that balance, but I have had some constituents who've said, you know, most people don't worry about our fund balances, but I have had some constituents who've said, you know, that's, that's pretty generous for lack of a better term. I mean, why would you keep that much balance when you should put that money to work or have an impact on, you know, our property tax revenues if, if we didn't have to have that high balance? I'm comfortable with it, but I just wanted to know a comparison so that I could respond to some of my constituents.
Yes, sir.
And then another question, you said that the mortgage registration fee income was down about, did you say a million?
Million four.
And the total amount when it's fully phased in, we're going to have about a hit of, what, about three million? Is that what you've said before?
Yes, sir. As it, as it phases out in 2019, yeah, the total impact will be a loss of revenue of about $3 million.
The legislature imposed that on us with the thought that they were going to stimulate business or, or banking business on real estate loans. I mean, that was one of the rationale I heard that, you know, we're losing, we're losing, we're losing real estate loans because of the mortgage registration fee, and it's going to the Federal Land Bank rather than our local banks. And I just, how's that playing out? I mean, it's a significant hit, significant hit to us, and it seems like only the bankers were complaining. I mean, normal people getting a mortgage for their home. I mean, I've bought two or three homes in my lifetime, and I've paid the mortgage registration fee, and it was, it was initially imposed on us, I think back in the 40s, so that it would be a reduction in, in property tax costs. And so that's a lot of verbiage to say. Is that achieving the results that they, that they purpose this for, that they taking away that fee?
Well, Commissioners Lindsey Pogers, you're CFO. We have seen an uptick, of course, in the number of mortgages filed. We'll work with Tanya Buckingham to get the details as to if we can tell which type of lender is filing those documents to be able to say whether it is our, our private lenders, if they're getting an uptick in that business that they were expecting to see. But we can maybe follow up with you at the retreat on that if, as a part of the forecast presentation, and if that's okay.
Well, just, just some sort of indication of whether or not it's working. I was pretty grumpy about it when they did it, as was our, our former registrar of deeds, Bill Meek. He fought hard against it, and it does impact our revenues, and so just want to know if it's working or not working.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, I think I have two questions. On your first, I'm sorry, on slide number two, you show a transfer of $23, $23 million. Is that fairly typical in terms of, I don't see any history of that, of that number, so I'm just curious, is that, is that fairly normal?
I would say it is fairly normal. What I'll do is I'll get you historical numbers on what we typically do as far as transfers.
Okay.
And that would give you maybe two or three years of history.
That'd be very helpful, and I'd like to see just a little bit of a breakdown of that number.
Yep.
I think it would be interesting to see a little more detail there. The second thing I'd like to ask is, I do have the, the quarterly financial report in front of me, and I'm still looking for the data, maybe I'm just missing it here, but can we get a, can we get an update on our, on our debt situation? What, what's our current debt? And how do we, how did we end the fiscal year 2017 in terms of our total debt load for the county? Do we have a, like, beginning and ending number for 2017?
I don't have those in front of me, but I can get those to you.
Okay. That'd be very helpful as well.
Yep.
And then I just, just as, just as a general comment, normally we have some analysis on, on fiscal health for the county. There's usually a few charts that shows up, down, or, or level, and those charts are missing. Is that something that's?
That was on purpose.
Okay.
No. Because I'm updating those with more current numbers.
Okay.
And I'm going to include those in the CAFR briefing, and that's why I mentioned the CAFR.
Oh, okay.
Presentation to you in the beginning.
All right.
So you're going to see those because I want to do some more comparisons with other counties or benchmark counties.
Very good. Well, thank you for the answer.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any further questions? I'd entertain a motion to receive and file.
So move.
We have a second discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrew?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item L, reported the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting of February 1st, 2018.
Morning, Joe.
Good morning, sir, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting that was conducted on February 1st by the Board of Bids and Contracts discussed and recommends five items for your consideration this morning. Item number one is fuel for fleet management, and this recommendation is to accept the overall low bid from M.J. Murphy, LLC at the fees listed, and establish contract pricing for one year with four one-year options to renew. Item number two is the conservation treatment for the soldiers and sailors Civil War Monument for Facilities Department, and this recommendation is to accept the low proposal from Russell Marty Conservation Services Incorporated for a total five-year cost of $78,240 and to establish contract pricing for any additional work at $125 per hour. Item number three is pumper truck, which is the Cedric County Fire District Number One's request. It's the recommendation is to accept the low proposal from Danko Emergency Equipment in the amount of $623,105. Item number four is Cedric County Developmental Disability Organization's Intellectual and Developmental Disability Programs, and this recommendation is to accept three of the four proposal options and approve funding to Rainbow's United Incorporated in the amount of $437,256. And our final item is Almentum Maintenance and Support for Information Technology and Support Services, and this recommendation is to accept the quote from Thompson Reuters in the amount of $348,721.29. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of these items.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Thomas. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, I recommend, wait, a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second. And a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrew?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next, sir. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners Mike Sculls County Manager, recommend you approve consent agenda items. Mike through Alpha Charlie.
We have a motion from Mike through Alpha Charlie. So move. We have a motion? I'll second it. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrew?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next, sir. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners Mike Sculls County Manager, recommend you approve consent agenda items. Mike through Alpha Charlie.
We have a motion from Mike through Alpha Charlie. So move. We have a motion? I'll second it. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrew?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next, sir. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners Mike Sculls County Manager, recommend you approve consent agenda items. Mike through Alpha Charlie.
We have a motion from Mike through Alpha Charlie. So move. We have a motion? I'll second it. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrew?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next, sir. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners Mike Sculls County Manager, recommend you approve consent agenda items. Mike through Alpha Charlie.
We have a motion from Mike through Alpha Charlie. So move. We have a motion? I'll second it. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrew?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Thank you. Mr. Dear?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Dear is going to give you a lot more elaborate description. I'll just bring to the Commissioners' attention that yesterday there was a hearing in Topeka on the legislation pertaining to election commissioner, and we do have the testimony of the election commissioner from Cedric County on that. And there's also legislation that the sheriff has brought to our attention, is concerned about related to assessing fees for the use of state databases. So I wanted to, I think what I would like to do is ask if the Commission's interested in taking a position on that, that latter item after Mr. Dear has explained a little bit to you.
Well, why don't we start with the second item? Were you going to give a brief overview of what the sheriff is asking before we talk about it?
Yeah, this was a bill that was just introduced last week. There's actually two bills. There's a bill in the Senate, a bill in the House, basically implementing a statewide cybersecurity system. And there is a provision towards the end of the bill that would, would allow them to bill up to $700 per employee of any governmental or, or non-governmental entity that accesses the state databases. So this would be a, a significant financial hit for the sheriff's office. You know, that, these bills are, are brand new. They were just introduced. I'm trying to kind of run some traps on, on, you know, who's behind it and, you know, what the prognosis is and whether they were leaving pass, but, you know, obviously that'd be a significant hit. I think our treasurer's office also would have a lot of employees that are accessing state, state databases, so.
What I understand is it's about $385,000 worth of funds from the sheriff's office alone, and then probably that from the rest of Cedric County with corrections and so forth, which is a significant hit. We're talking $700,000 to $1 million that aren't in our budget to fund something that we weren't aware of, that's mandated by state statute, that, that we have to be able to link to these different computer networks, and now suddenly they want to bill us $700 a person to link to those. So I am rather distressed as our sheriff is in this latest turn of events. Do we know who introduced this bill?
They're listed as committee bills, so that's pretty standard in the Kansas Legislature. It doesn't actually have a named sponsor on either pieces of legislation, so.
Mr. Chairman, I think we can probably find out who requested that the committees introduced those bills. Eric Yost County Counselor again, I'm sorry. One concern I had, and I, I spoke with the sheriff yesterday, is that the, the one bill in the Senate especially was introduced on a Tuesday, and they had the hearing on a Thursday, and we really weren't aware of the bill's existence or what, or certainly not the ramifications of it. And I think we need to, what I'm going to ask you to do is if you wish to take a position is to have a vote on that so that we can convey to legislators through our lobbyists that you voted on this and are asking that they do one thing or another on the bill. So I would ask that you take a position on it if, if that's your desire.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Yost. I appreciate that additional information. I know our sheriff is very distressed. I think that it will harm Cedric County along with the other counties. I have absolutely no problem with taking a, a position on this in support of our sheriff. I look forward to seeing if any of the other commissioners have any alternative views. If not, I, I would also entertain a motion that we support our sheriff in opposition.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would move that we take the action that you've indicated and officially support the sheriff of Cedric County in his opposition to this potential legislation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on it? I think we're all united on this. We'll take a vote on it in just a moment, but it is distressing that it looks like they're trying to balance some of their fiscal woes over the, the different counties. So I want to make sure that they, they understand that. So if there is nothing, no further discussion, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrew?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, Will.
The next item was the, the hearings on the election commissioner bill were yesterday. There was a Senate bill and a House bill. I arrived a little bit late, so I was there for the House bill. It was fairly contentious. There were representatives from, I believe, all four election commissioner offices in the four larger counties, as well as the Secretary of State opposing the bill that would bring the budget authority under the Board of County Commissioners. And, you know, primarily it was the, the four election commissioners, but there was also a representative from the Secretary of State's office there as well that, that was opposing that legislation. So I could give more, more feedback on it if you'd like, but it was, it was pretty obvious that the election commissioners are opposed to that legislation.
Well, thank you, Will. I think each one of our commissioners have the testimony from our election commissioner here in Cedric County. I've read through it three or four times, kind of with amazement, actually, as I read through it. We just funded the election office something like $7 million to buy new equipment. We did have a discussion earlier this year. I can't go into some of the discussions from previous years because I wasn't on the commission, but earlier this year, our election commissioner did want to send out some mailings that was going to cost our taxpayers a lot of money, that weren't required by any statute, any requirement, any law, anything. And the Cedric County Commission, trying to be good stewards of the funds for our citizens, voted not to allow her to do that. The problem that we have right now is that we've got an election commissioner that is appointed by Kris Kobach. As a matter of fact, not too long ago, I suddenly got a little note in my email that in a few minutes why Kris Kobach was going to be in town to swear in our election commissioner to a new term. And that was the first we even knew that she was up for a new term or anyone even thought to invite us, the, the commissioner. So it appears that there is a strong disdain. On top of that, we have put together a legislative agenda. We've been working on our legislative agenda for some time, very public, and not at one point did our election commissioner come over. She's appointed, not elected, not has only authority that is given to her by Kris Kobach. If you read her entire testimony, she blames the Cedric County Commission for everything but the famine, from what I can understand. At the end of this, she says that if she doesn't have all the funding that she wants because she can set her own budget, that she can't go out and help all the other communities and, in smaller counties throughout the state of Kansas. So I guess she feels that it's her responsibility to use taxpayers' funding to take care of all the other counties in, in the state of Kansas. It distresses me greatly that we have someone that's appointed by Kris Kobach that doesn't even come over and talk to the Cedric County Commission before she goes up and makes testimony, and she makes some significant testimony that's in opposition, direct opposition to Cedric County. We did not include in our legislative agenda, as some of the other counties did, that we appoint this individual. We left that as it was, still appointed by Kris Kobach. But unfortunately, I, I am on the fence on that item at this point. I think we need some control. We set the budget. We go out and task Cedric County taxpayers to be able to fund our election office. We have no desire whatsoever to influence the elections. What we want to do is make sure that we're good stewards of the funding that provided to us through the election office. So to say that I am distressed is mildly a statement, that, that our election commissioner would go this far to go up and testify in opposition to our legislative agenda without even consoling us before she went. So I am not happy right now. Commissioner Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I just wanted to make sure that I understand and express my, my perspective on this, but Four urban counties in the state of Kansas where the large population is, the Secretary of State appoints that person, and that person comes into us and can make demands, requests, however you want to say it, that impact our budget without, without any authority or, or without any recourse, I guess. We, we don't have any recourse against that person. I think, so, so we can, on the one hand, we say, well, there's only four counties that are wanting this, but it's the four largest counties in the state, and we're dealing with a person who is not elected, who handles significant amounts of public funds without, without any elected oversight. So I, I think that's the, the fundamental issue, but one of the things that upsets me a little bit, as our chairman is upset, is that our, our election commissioner made statements in, in her testimony that if this was changed, the current county commission would make decisions that would restrict voter access and voter turnout. And I take that kind of personally. So I'm, I'm also vested in this on a logical basis and on a, you know, on a personal dignity basis, because I'm not going to do things that restrict voter turnout or inhibit our citizens from being able to vote in a, in a convenient and orderly fashion. So I, I guess I can stop there, but I'll just start repeating what the chairman's already said, but I think this is important to all our citizens and it's a serious issue. It needs to be corrected. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Enruh? Any further discussion on this? Well, we've still got our legislative agenda out there. I don't think that we are changing our mind on the legislative agenda. I want to make sure that as we go up to Topeka that we express our strong support for what we believe is right for the citizens here in Cedric County. Okay? Do you have anything else to report?
I, I don't at this time.
Very good. Thank you. Other? Do we have anything? I see nothing? Okay, Madam Chair, the next item, Madam Clerk?
Executive session.
Just got promoted.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 30 minutes until 10:47, I think that's right, to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. The executive session is required to protect, this executive session is required to protect the privacy interests of an identifiable individual, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session no sooner than 10:47.
We have a motion for executive session?
Second.
We have a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Enruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
We are in recess.
Does anything else need to come before the commission today? Seeing nothing, we're adjourned.